Perfect.
Good, good evening, everyone. We want to welcome you today being Tuesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, to the special meeting of the South Uco Lynnhurst Board of Education. May we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mr. Bloomberg?
Here.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Ryan? Did we lose her?
Yep. Especially that. She should be back in a second.
I'm here.
Perfect. Thank you for that roll call. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. If you are listening to our stream this evening, or if you listen at a later date, we can go right into item two. Discussion items, two point one, summer enrichment programs, Dr. Reed.
Um, Mrs. Jones, if it would be okay, um, since that's a little bit of a longer presentation, could we, uh, start with two point two, career readiness and social emotional learning? Would that be okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, hello, Ms. Thompson, for, uh, joining us this evening. I, as we, I think last month, or boy, time just keeps running. We always said, stay tuned. We, we, we introduce some of the, the concepts that we were doing. And, uh, we've, uh, continued to work on career readiness and social emotional learning. Um, we, we, there's still more to come, but I think what we'd like to do, um, is give an update uh, on that, um, this week, because next week, actually, we're going to be offering some new courses, and it's going to be on the Board of General as a recommendation for approval. And I would like Ms. Thompson, and catch your breath, but Thompson, I know you've had a very busy day. So, um, you know, I'd like for her to give an update on what we're doing with that. And I am going to stop presenting so the screen looks a little bit better. And then we'll get into summer enrichment programs. Oh, for some reason, here we go. I know, it's, it's. No, no. I hear it.
Uh, she's probably relogging in. It looks like she left, but she'll probably come back in.
Yeah.
We can kick ours off, Dr. Reed, if you want.
Okay, we're gonna try again. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I am very sorry, all of these technology issues, and I even got Spectrum. So I've got AT and T working. I have Spectrum. I said, I'm going to do everything I possibly can to avoid this. So I actually have both, um, providers trying to get this right. So please forgive me. I've been trying, so, um, I don't know what's going on. But I am very much prepared and excited to be able to share with you um, the updates relative to this career connections and SCL. So, um, I'm going to just go through, um, what I have prepared here. Um, please stop me at any point. Um, I, I oftentimes will write things down because of my excitement. Um, I miss things, so I want to make sure I cover everything. So again, please feel free to interrupt, um, for clarification as needed. So of course, over the past few months, um, as you know, in our work sessions, Mr. Williamson and I have mentioned our work relative to K twelve master scheduling, um, strengthening our college and career readiness. Um, our products like Transio to track the success plans and graduation skills required by the state. Um, and creating opportunities for internships, um, technical education and other non-college op- options for our students. Um, we certainly believe that success in life um, through education and career opportunities are linked to positive social and emotional development and wellness. Um, we know that with COVID nineteen, um, the pandemic created academic, social and emotional learning and access gaps that we must be prepared to address to ensure that our students are on track for appropriate grade level achievement, social emotional development, and on-time graduation for optimal post-secondary options. So in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year, we are excited that we will be able to launch our K twelve career connections and SCL, social emotional learning, not us, but social emotional learning, in this case, SCL, plan, which is aligned um, and follows the legislation of the Department of Education's, um, K twelve career connections framework that will include age and grade level appropriate activities around our college and career readiness skills, our career competencies and soft skills, which reflect and embed ODE, social emotional learning standards. So we will be posting positions. Um, teachers will fill these positions. Um, in our elementary schools, the LRC position will essentially morph in its, um, focus to include career connections and SCL. Um, so the elementary retirements that we have this year will be filled by teachers serving in this new capacity. Um, it's important to state that we are going to maintain the critical LRC skills to ensure these skills are not compromised or otherwise lost for our students. Um, so that's important, that, that we are wanting to make sure that those critical skills that we know are needed for students and study and research, and, um, the computer skills, those things that we know, um, and asking our LRC, um, teacher, one of which I spoke with today, to help identify what are those key skills that we need to make sure our students still have, um, in this morphing of this, this position with career connections and SCL. Um, a teacher will be added at Memorial, and we will add an additional teacher at Rush to join the staff member already working in that capacity at Rush. So as a new district initiative, um, teachers will implement and inform the content and curriculum for the course. Um, our comprehensive plan will utilize high interest and vendor-developed articles and literature that integrates literacy and SCL standard, social emotional standards. Um, students will have opportunities again to develop those study, research and computer skills that we believe are required for academic success and career success. Um, the ODE required success and graduation plans, um, will be maintained and consistent with our district policy um, on career advising, uh, will include special presentations and programs um, that will be offered during this course. Um, and then the soft skills, I think that we mentioned to you in a previous meeting, um, with regard to, you know, self-management, communication, personal goal-setting, problem-solving, critical thinking. Um, those skills will be addressed. Understanding brain development and executive functioning will be taught. Um, our positive behavior intervention supports, um, behavior expectations. We often talk about the SCL way, and we really want to make sure that we're defining for our students beginning in kindergarten. What is the SCL way? What is that standard of expectations? You know, for me, ideally, um, when all of our students understand this and our parents understand this, um, because Mrs. Bussie will be working in collaboration with what's happening in this course. So whatever themes that we're running for family and community engagement will be parallel themes at times that are running in this course, so that our parents are able to reinforce these skills, reinforce the, these conversations at home um, with their children. Um, again, the behavior expectations that we have of students um, in our district. You know, at some point, some level, we should no longer see suspensions. Definitely not expulsions, because all of our children are coming in with this standard, with this set of expectations. Um, specific to the career connections piece, which again is aligned with the Ohio Department of Education's career connections. Um, grades K through five will focus on career awareness. Uh, grades six through eight will focus on career exploration, and grades nine through twelve will focus on career planning. And again, some of this probably sounds familiar to you, because in that recent meeting we had with Mr. Williamson, he shared some of the work and planning that we are doing relative to this. Um, so in terms of the master scheduling for this, the quarter course will follow the current LRC schedule at the elementary school and as a semester's course, um, at, for the secondary level. Um, you know, earlier in the year, you were aware that you approved the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two course description books for Memorial and Rush, but at that time, this course was still under development. Um, so therefore, next week, at the regular board meeting, we will present to you the updated course descriptions so that they can be included in the Memorial and Brush course description books. Um, certainly, as CELTA members, the teachers that are in these positions, um, will still report to their building principals, um, and like the school counselors and school social workers, I will support the, the teachers in these positions as well uh, with the goal of aligning our work. Um, again, we're trying to achieve this comprehensive plan of social emotional learning, soft skills, college and career readiness. Um, and, and so we feel like that work does need to align. Um, our school social workers and counselors and other related, um, school-based providers may at times push into all grade levels for this course, so that they'll be able to offer different programs and, and related content. Um, again, I mentioned Mrs. Bussie, but also, um, Mr. Hall, um, our college and career pathway specialist will also support the work so that our career fairs, our college fairs, um, our opportunities to expose our students to internships, what's available, so all of those things are aligned. We don't want anything that is disconnected or otherwise, you know, not, um, aligned with the work that's already occurring in the district. Um, and again, I mentioned that Mrs. Bussie will be working together with this as well to make sure that whatever themes, um, and concepts that we're presenting will also be presented to parents to be able to reinforce at home. Um, so the goal is that the positions will be posted tomorrow, those that are at the vacancies, so that we can move through the process, um, fairly quickly. Um, we want and we need our teachers to build this course with us, um, that content and curriculum, so the sooner we have them in position, the more opportunities we will have um, to work with them and plan for that curriculum writing and planning that we know that will be required. So this year, twenty-one, twenty-two, will be our pilot year. And so we're wanting to get as many of our students, particularly with the master scheduling, um, at Memorial and perhaps Greenview, you know, getting all the students through the course, we're giving ourselves permission to work through some of the scheduling nuances so that by the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we will be able to make sure that all students will have this exposure. Um, so we're, we're excited about it. I'm very excited about it. Um, it is, um, bringing to fruition things that we have discussed for a while. And so, um, Dr. Reed has allowed us to make this happen, and so we're, we're really excited to go. So thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh, obviously, folks, you know, I think this will be a, something that we'll keep revisiting, because it's a pilot year. So we're, once, once things get kicked off, um, i- i- in the school year, we, we certainly like to invite some of those folks, um, you know, to our, our work session to give an update on how things are going. Um, what we plan on doing is, um, you know, during COVID, I, I started a message from the superintendent. There was just so many messages. I had to go out to staff and parents. Um, I finally feel like I've, as a superintendent, um, can talk about more things than COVID now. And I've been doing a, a weekly message to staff on a lot of stuff from our, 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 our plan. Um, what we plan on doing is actually, um, I'm informing staff first, and plan on doing is, is actually taking some of that messaging, and we'll be pushing that out in a more, in a little bit of a different package, uh, to parents with regards to our programming for next year. Um, I'm trying not to overend, uh, um, overwhelm our parents. I know there's a lot of things being pushed out at the building level with the closure of the school year, but, um, I'm planning on putting out, um, you know, a condensed um, uh, message to our parents with a lot of exciting changes that we have, uh, with regards to our, our reopening recovery revitalization, uh, plan that has been submitted to the state of Ohio. Um, and, and for those listening, the LRC is actually Learning Resource Center. Uh, it's, it's our, i- in the kind of like media, uh, library, just, just a familiarity there. Uh, so, um, any, any questions before we move on? I do see Catherine, your hand up.
Yes, so you answered one, Learning Resource. Okay, so this course will be an online course. Okay. No, yeah, no.
No. And it will be a part of our, um, you know, standard courses. So yeah, um, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. So we're anticipating that all of our students will be in the building. And so this course will be one of those courses that's offered with everything else.
So where does this fall as far as curriculum? What, what, um, designation, um, history, and so studies English ma- math?
You pick it. I mean, you know, I, you know, uh, I don't know, Melissa, maybe one of you guys.
Yeah, I mean, r- really, when, when I've looked through, and I have sitting here on my home desk, um, all of the information, including the ODE, um, EMIS manual that I'm very familiar with. So I've been going through to make sure that certainly how we're coding this.
Coding it.
Following, following the career, um, area, and so it will be, um, we will ensure that how it's coded um, for EMIS for purposes and reporting, that it is done correctly. But it's following in that, um, career um, area and, and space that is part of, of EMIS.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Good, good, Neil.
Catherine, go ahead. Finish your questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, this, so the teachers that are teaching this class, um, are they going to come from different, um, subject areas? Or do, do they get to choose? Or how, how is that working?
It, it is possible. Um, we are posting the position and, um, you know, wanting to, you know, make it available to current CELTA members. Um, and anyone that wants to apply, Dr. Reed, you want to?
Yeah, sure. I, I think it also depends on the grade, the grade level band. I mean, I, I, I think a few, you know what I mean? You know, when you talk about K three is much different than if you talk about high school. I mean, that's a, a whole different component in, in, in a skill set. Um, when you, but, but I think it has to be pretty much when you, a, a match of, of what somebody's comfortable with. I mean, when you, this is, this is actually a pilot. It's new. And so it's going to be somebody that's going to be willing to try different things. It's going to be a, a class of active engagement, uh, maybe role-playing. Um, just different things, you know, it's a new curriculum that they have. I mean, so, you know, this is not something that's really typical, nor we want it to be. So I think that has to be somebody who's, who has that, um, it's also got not just be a technical skill set, but also those, um, I don't want to say personality, it was, uh, or, or, or what people are, are comfortable with. So I think that's, that's where, you know, you're going to be teaching social emotional things at the elementary level. You know, again, that might be something that somebody who's, who's comfortable with getting down on the floor, maybe with K three and, and doing things like that. So I think it's pretty much, you know, again, not so much the certification, but, but pretty much a match with regards to, um, delivery of, of a unique curriculum. And that, and it is a work in progress. We, we can get it done. Um, Mr. Bloomberg?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, is this just an elective, or is this a class that all students are going to be required to take?
Good question. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dr. Reed, do you want to?
Yeah, we, we, we don't want it to be an elective.
It sounds like it should be for every student.
That's exactly our, that is our goal. So we, we, again, this is, this, we want this unique to SCL. We don't want it to be like, I'm going to elect to go to it. Uh, you know, we call it a pilot, because there are some nuances in the schedule late in the year that every child might get it at, at Memorial in different places. But we definitely, our goal is, uh, Mr. Bloomberg, it is not elective, and every student, kind of like when you're in college, you don't get out of your freshman orientation, you know what I mean? And they, you know, they're very, because they want to, they want to set you up for success. This is how we're approaching this, K twelve. We want to set you up for success in life. Um, we, our goal is career-bound. We didn't say college. And, you know, we talked about that last month, is, is learning those, those life skills, those soft skills, and that starts at an early age. So we see this as not, um, an elective. We see this that every student, when they graduate, uh, must be going through this, this program with us. So I have a question.
One second. I commend the entire leadership for coming up with this, even if it was something that was driven by ODE. Um, my daughter and many of her friends that went to prestigious schools and were very successful, um, were really lacking in the life stuff when they graduated. Um, and it was amazing to me, um, the kinds of questions my daughter asked about things that were life, things that would likely fall into that whole financial, um, literacy program that's also being established. Um, and quite frankly, um, those soft skills, um, I don't care if you go to college, if you go to career, um, they are more critical than anything you're going to learn. Because it can be a, it'll gets applied to life. So kudos.
Absolutely. And, and I think that's something that has to be ingrained from, from an early age and, and, and reintroduced and, and be able to have it to cultivate in those opportunities to, to grow in that, that piece. So we, you know, again, as I mentioned last, last month, is when I talked to employers, one of the things are, they get a lot of good resumes, and they got a lot of people with, with the technical skills, but it's those soft skills that really, those that are strong there, that start to set those other folks apart, that actually can have sustainability in a position. You might be able to interview well and get the job, but it's sustainability to be successful in that, so.
So, um, the question I have is, forgive me for not remembering the proper name, but there's that group of classes where you take at the high school, they had them in eleventh grade and then in twelfth grade that we just implemented a couple of years ago. Is it going to involve fine-tuning those to where some of that stuff might be incorporated in this K through twelve career connection?
That's exactly right. And I met with the staff member currently serving in that capacity. And, um, they are very excited and already looking through things and ready to work and, and add to what we've already been doing. So, I mean, this is just really an exciting time, and I appreciate, um, you know, the, your feedback and support, because this is, this is so exciting for me. I'm, I'm doing all that I can to hold it together. Um, but this is really something that I have felt for a long time that, that we've needed and have wanted to do. And so, so yes, so what you've already approved, um, in the past, this will just be, um, a continuation and a strengthening of that work, but now also applied in a K twelve way.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's, I mean, I, I want to say that is good, because we always sit on our platforms and bark about the whole child. The whole child. And slowly, these last couple of years, especially with the pandemic, we have started to see what it means to educate the whole child. And again, with the adoption of the seals and some of the other things that we are dealing with, we are taking the whole child. And even if the whole child is presented in pieces, some of the things that we are putting on the table is glue to help glue that whole child back together and present to this world a whole child.
I, I, if I, can I just add one more thing that, that may be of interest to you? Um, one of our school counselors, I believe that in the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, um, either Mr. Bloomberg and/or Mrs. Falkenberg were sharing about some screeners. And I had mentioned, I had just had a meeting with the ESC right before, um, our, our meeting, the, the, uh, board meeting, where I was looking at screeners. And so one of our school counselors was also in the same process of looking at screeners. So what we're hoping is that with this class, we will be able to implement a universal screener so that we'll be in the position to see when our students are returning for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Where are they? What needs do they have? How can we support? And so that's something that, that I think you'll also see that will come from this. That opportunity to initiate those kinds of things, that certainly it has been our practice not to take away from our core instruction. And this is creating an opportunity for us to be able to do some innovative things and some things that are going to support, um, our students.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Actually, you and I have been working together way too long. You just, I wrote a note down here, and, and you covered it well, so good, good job about creating those opportunities. So, um, we're, you know, stay tuned. Like I said, this is a work in progress. As you can see, we're making progress. And as we continue to develop it, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to come back to the board and, and present. We're really excited. Um, you know, people, the pandemic has been a challenge. But again, we, you always said we turn our challenges into opportunities, and, and this is one of those opportunities here. So we appreciate that.
And also, I think, if I may, I think also, Ms., um, Lee was also involved in that conversation too, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know. But, but just know that all those things that, that we talk about, that we discuss in those meetings, we really do take them to heart, and we try to implement and be responsive, um, to the feedback that we receive from you. So, so please know, it is duly noted and acted upon.
Thank you so much.
Any other, um, questions before we go on, or comments before we go on to our, our two point one is the summer enrichment programs? Uh, just. Okay. So, uh, before we go there, I just, we have a, another, um, guest, but certainly no stranger this evening. We have, um, Ms. Sylvia Marshall. She is currently an assistant principal at Greenview Middle School. But she, uh, last month, you approved for, her position to be the principal of our summer enrichment programs. So I am going to allow her, or Mr. Capo, I'm not sure who's taking the lead, but I think we have a little presentation, so I am going to uh, turn it over to you, Mr. Capo and, uh, Ms. Marshall. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank, yeah, thank you, everybody. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna tee up the star here, but, uh, when this originally started, um, we, after the fourth quarter declaration, if you remember, um, the last question on that declaration asked if any parents and students were, um, interested in our summer academy, if we were able to offer one. Um, our, we had overwhelming response of yes. Um, so as soon as we got those responses, uh, we went to work. Um, I thought we owed it to our community, we owed it to our students, we owed it to our families to offer. Uh, and Ms. Marshall is going to show, in my opinion, uh, one of the best summer academies, um, around. And before we get going here, uh, I just wanted to throw out a few thank yous. Uh, the committee I put together, um, included Amanda Morris, Ms. Bussie, uh, Dr. Continenza, Ryan Morton, and, uh, also a little shout out to Ms. Huffenbach. Um, we've done a lot of ordering, a lot of curriculum, a lot of organization, a lot of um, interviewing, a lot of things going on, um, and without her help, none of this would have been possible. Um, the whole goal of this was to re-acclimate our young learners back to school-based learning with a mix of curriculum, social, emotional, and, and fun. And, uh, now that, uh, all that's been said, I'm going to turn it over here to the star of the show. Um, Sylvia Marshall, um, accepted the principal position, um, immediately upon being offered. Um, has dove into this. You're going to see some of her work. Um, she's put in, um, numerous hours, has conducted interviews, um, has met with us constantly. Um, her and I have been in constant communication and, uh, what, what she's developed and the outlook for this, and, uh, the amount, having over three hundred students that we're going to be able to house in this thing is, is truly amazing. Um, it's well over, um, I mean, most we've had is barely, barely a hundred, um, in, in the past. So what she's been able to do, we've reached outside. Um, we did internal interviews first, and then she's been conducting, um, external interviews, um, that we posted outside and have been able to pull teachers from other places, um, to come to our summer academy. Because like I said, when the demand's there and the community wants it, our kids need it. Um, it was, it was thinking outside of the box. It was, um, full-on task force. And, uh, with all that being said, Ms. Marshall, I'm going to be your Vanna here. I'm going to mute and, uh, tee you up, okay?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Nice to be here tonight. Okay, so yes, um, our summer academy, I mean, probably seen the theme, but, uh, right there, you can see the greatest summer academy around. So that is our goal of, of what we plan to be. Um, Mr. Capo went over our philosophy of re-acclimating our young learners to school-based learning, but also some things that we looked at, um, is the RRR plan. Um, if, I know, if you had a chance to look through it, you will see that it speaks. Um, if, I know if you had a chance to look through it, you will see that it speaks a lot about the summer academy and things of that nature. So three of the goals we pulled out is about, you know, the routines that we want to get back into our students' life. About uh meeting students where they are in the learning process and definitely incorporating some encore program opportunities. Being that our K three with the shift to um remote learning and different things. Then have the opportunity to participate in a lot of our arts and music and like P E programs this year. So that's gonna be a focus for us during the summertime. So our theme for summer academy is a wonderful carnival theme. Um, you can see the dates there. So with, with summer academy, one thing that we definitely wanna focus on for our students is not just some of the achievement gaps. But some of the experience gaps. Uh, we, we know that a lot of time, parents are working in the summer. And especially with COVID still being around, students might not get those opportunities to have, you know, those fun. Activities that you go back to school telling everyone about. So we are definitely gonna be incorporating a lot of fun things to really motivate our students to wanna come out every day. So that they're learning but not knowing they're learning. For our schedule, we are doing, sorry, Monday through Thursday. Um, and then with the one thirty to three optional that Mr. Capo has talked to the board about several times. That will include our camp um and arts curriculum. So staffing, we um were very lucky to have about twenty-six teachers sign up from the district. Uh, right away. And like, um, Mr. Capo spoke to, like, he really, really, really wanted to get every student that we could possibly get. Involved in the summer academy. So we reached out uh externally. And we were able to bring in about um six more teachers into the um program. And we also have four intervention specialists that will be working with us, one being of students and one camp coordinator. You see some of our staff members right there. We were, uh, we went around and surprised them with a little carnival themed box to welcome them. Um, because you know, they had signed up pretty early. And so with them not being approved that we will present for next board meeting. We just wanted to know, especially during teacher appreciation week, that we appreciate them too. So the staff is so excited and they are ready to get started. As far as student enrollment, so we were able, working with the staff that you just seen, um, to get about three hundred thirty-six spots. Available right now. So with those spots, that would allow us to have twelve students per classroom. And we are really almost at our goal of having four homerooms per grade level. Um, and with the homerooms, you know, they will do their math and their reading, so we're very close to that. Unfortunately, I know everyone wants to attend the greatest summer academy around. But unfortunately, we do not have the space, so it will be about recommendation. Um, this is something that normally happens with our summer academy, though your students, um, K three. Buildings in Greenview will recommend students for summer academy. We really hope that we can send invitations out to those parents. Hopefully by the end of next week, but uh if not, definitely before the end of the month. Transportation will be at each elementary and some of the parks like Anderson, Bexley. So that students have free transportation um to and from camp. And we will have uh two different times. Like I said, we will have the one thirty drop off. And then hopefully the three o'clock drop off after the camp opportunities. And we are still doing free breakfast and lunch. So during the day, they will come in, get their free breakfast and free lunch. So daily activities, one thing that we heard from um the staff when we started talking about E L Os. Is that they wanted um a different curriculum than they see in the classroom. We also heard a lot of feedback about, you know, the students have been on computers for over a year now. So we really want less computers. So working like with uh our team that we talked about, especially Dr. Continenza. He has um purchased, well, Huffenbach purchased, but he has recommended uh several programs that we're gonna be using. So Scholastic Lit Camp, you can see some of the books there. So there's gonna actually be physical books that the students are using. With our math program, math extension, each student will have their own manipulative kit. So we're going to do some professional development um before camp starts. And part of that will be, um, you know, making an individual kit in little baggies for kids. Social emotional activities, working with uh Mrs. Thompson's office. There will be a activity period called Boom. And that will be every day from uh like one thirty, I believe, like twelve thirty to one thirty. And so working with some of our outside providers and even working with them, one, one of the messages that we, we tell everybody. We want this to be hands-on. We want this to be, you know, a fun experience. Um, so even during that time, there might be a pop-up of a balloon maker when we practice our balloon breathing. So we might have somewhere, someone there making balloon animals for students. So it's gonna be very engaging activities. It's gonna be a, a mixture of highs and lows. So you can see that piece and definitely the um camp at the end of the day. So of course with COVID, um, I know some things are changing, some things are, are, you know, a little different. But we will be continuing to follow all of the guidelines set forth that we have been following this school year. Um, I believe we've done a great job of keeping both students and teachers safe in our buildings. Um, even when you look at our sports teams and those who are still practicing at some of our, at like Memorial and Brush. We've done a great job being able to, you know, move to outside and do different activities and do them safely. So definitely safety will, will be at the top of our minds. So this is just a, a little snippet of some of the things that, that we are getting prepared for, for our summer academy. So if you have any questions, either myself or uh your capable.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall, for the greatest summer enrichment program of the year. Okay. You never fail to uh um disappoint me, no. I, I, I knew it would be exciting. So any, any comments or questions?
I'm gonna wear my costume that I wore around the teachers, but I figured that is a little, that's a little too much.
That's okay. Great, 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 great presentation. Very excited.
That looks really exciting, Sylvia. I think the kids will be very, very excited to be part of that.
I do, I will say that, um, what excited me most was the parents that I've spoken to. Um, they didn't even know the full credentials of what was gonna happen in the summer, but they were wondering if it was still gonna go. So, and it was a little different this year. Like, it wasn't parents calling and saying like, I just need somewhere for these kids to go this summer. It was families really concerned about how much of this summer can we get help catching up? But at the same time, I don't want them to be drained with schoolwork every single day like they're in school. So that has been very exciting to me. And then know that we got a waiting list as well. I'm excited to see where the kids go. I'm excited to see when they come back into the building, how their response is gonna be. And I think for once, they won't be drained out this summer, but they will be getting the enrichment that they need to try to put them ahead when we come in next year. So I appreciate your insight. I've always said, you always have been an out-of-the-box thinker. I will not let anybody shove you back into a box because you.
I, I appreciate that. Yes, it's gonna be very out of the box. So, uh, stay tuned, as Ms. will say.
Um, any, anybody else with that? No, just, just real, you know, real exciting stuff. Uh, I, you know, I, I, I have to comment to the leadership team. I mean, from not just the people on this call, uh, but you know, the other administrators, other leadership. I mean, this has been um seven days a week. I mean, we, we knew that when we take on this position. But there's times on Saturday mornings, we're working to get things done, Sunday afternoons. Um, because we're reinventing a lot of things and that's really, actually it's exciting. I mean, that, you know, as much work it is, it's very exciting. When you talk about the fall, I mean, here's how the work goes. We have to look and see how the summer goes and then reevaluate where those students are. And some of the things we're gonna be able to anticipate better than others. And, but when that happens, then we're going to. Um, you know, adjust, be flexible and, 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 and have programming that may have to continue. Uh, maybe there's something after school that's creative, or you know, some of our teachers actually brought up in a, in a survey. They, everybody's tired in the week, but they'd be willing to do a few hours on a Saturday. I mean, we're gonna be flexible as long as we have the need. The demand, I should say, and then in, in the need and, and things like that, we are going to uh continue. I always want to reiterate, a lot of the things that you're hearing about tonight is supported by our, I know I sound like a broken record. But our, 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 our plan, which is really an extension of the district strategic plan. And we have submitted that to the state. It, it has helped us with our federal funding to know uh where our, our monies are going. And so it's, it's been really helpful to have this, this plan. It is on the website, but I wanna tell everybody, we're constantly gonna be probably updating that. Because it's a working document. As we're adding new things in our internal document, I will be updating the external ones. So just because you look at it once, don't, it, it's not gonna be static. There's gonna be other things that are probably gonna be added uh next month. So just um stay tuned um for that as well. But thank you, Ms. Marshall, Mr. Capo, Ms. Thompson, for your presentation this evening. I think that we had just two items, um, but two very exciting items, I, you know, that's even that, that concludes. Our, our discussion.
Perfect. Um, I believe we do not have a need for executive session, correct?
That would be, that would be correct.
Um, the only other thing I ask, can we say hello to Ms.?
Oh, yeah. Oh, you know, actually, I should have, I should have, um, I'm, I'll give a small introduction, but I'm gonna put her on a next month, cause I know more people listen in.
I just wanna say hi, like. Never even said hi to her. I feel all bad.
It's all right. Hi.
So let me, let me do a quick introduction. This is our Director of Elementary and Secondary Education. Look, I shortened it. Okay? Um, she is, yeah, and I'll repeat, she's spent most of her career in uh Lorraine City Schools and has experience from elementary to middle school. Uh, to high school. She's been um a middle school and high school uh principal. Uh, when I looked at her resume, almost everywhere she's been, she's been able to improve um the academic achievement of the students. Um, on her resume, she talks about equity and being able to provide those uh services to um. All of our students bring out their best potential. And most recently, she has been in East Cleveland, but we are so happy for you to be here. So I'll do it again. So go ahead and say hello.
Hello.
We just wanted to say hi.
Yeah, she joined us May third and I have to tell you what, we are, um, they're, they're, boy, they've hit the ground running. And um they're doing right now a lot of training on Wednesdays with our uh administrative team, including our assistant principals. And uh we'll probably be giving a report as we probably get things together. I won't throw her into the fire at the first meeting. But I will be having her give you an update probably in June, uh, at the conclusion of a lot of our trainings. The board knows of where we've been, what we've been doing, but, but welcome. She's a fan of Mickey Mouse, I have to say.
I am.
So look, I don't even have a paper in front of me. I already know you, so.
That's all I wanted. Um, does anybody have anything else? If not, we can make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, real quick, Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, I forgot, uh, one big thank you, um, because it was such a monster. Um, I'm gonna give a quick shout to Lee Heitman, um, in transportation, um, locating uh twelve bus drivers for the summer. Um, was not an easy task. And along with all the kitchen people and Mike Murphy and Chris Crist and all those things. I totally forgot about transportation and the food. I just wanted to make sure that they got their plug, because that was a huge entity of how we were able to make all this happen. So sorry to bust in there, but.
No, that's right. That's a whole nother uh. Strategizing how to pick up those kids and when and where, and then issuing notifications to the families to tell them where to be. So.
Yes, so, thank you.
No, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. This has been a fantastic effort, you know, with our, our, not only our teaching staff, but our classified staff. You talk about food service and transportation. You're gonna have to establish a whole new bus routes group, group bus routes based on the kids that sign up. And that's a whole different uh thing. So it does take a lot of work. We appreciate that. So thank you, Mr. Capo, for reminding everybody. I think that's it.
All right. It is now six forty-four. May we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Bloomberg? And was that Ms. Falkenberg?
Yeah.
All right. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You got that, Mr. Hill?
I got it. We're all good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.